...that one, but at any rate, we have done a complete turnaround from the program two years ago into today to only have euthanized two dogs. And it wouldn't benefit anyone to adopt out an aggressive dog, so that's not what we're about. We're about placing the homes where it's appropriate in a good home for the dog and for the owner, a good situation for both. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you so very much. Do you have any questions? Will accept the motion.
I make a motion to accept the name of the court.
You probably move in second, all in favor say aye. Let the record reflect that if you can. Thank you very much. Very good. Uh, Fire Chief, monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've been kinda busy this month. We've had a total of nine calls in the city and eleven outside the city. We had two helicopters assist, one private dwelling, one business, three false alarms, three service calls, a total of nine calls inside the city, three grasshoppers, two false alarms, two rescues, one service call, and three mutual aiders for a total of eleven outside the city. For a total of twenty calls, running a pause this year up to one hundred and seventy-nine. On our painting, we've been very busy painting, but so far we've spent four thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars, twenty-nine cents on painting. Mr. West has signed up like six kids on the Explorer Program. Myself, Mr. Marvell, and yours truly promoted to Fire Safety Week. Through a four or five day period, we've had like, something around five hundred kids. And Mr. Marvell had the helicopter with the school one day, and that was four, five hundred kids over that day, well, probably around three fifty or so. We've been working, just today, we was working on getting our classes lined up through the year for the, trying to get classes lined up as good for the PIAL, trying to get everything lined up and headed that direction. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chief. The Chief is doing an outstanding job. You look through the fire station now, it would be difficult to recognize that same fire station that was there when he took over, Chief. Personnel, there's been a noticeable difference in the awareness of the uniform and the professionalism that is showing up, you know, in the fire department. I'd just like to just say, just keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Here. Police Chief, monthly report. I'm sorry?
That's okay.
I'll take the.
I knew that we accept the Fire Chief's report.
I'm gonna second that long way into it, that we always got copies of reports. Yes, sir, I do apologize for that, and I promise you in the future, matter of fact, while you're on the executive session, there will be one of me waiting for you when you get through that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Let the record reflect that unanimously. Police Chief, monthly report.
Monthly report for Police Department, September seventeenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twelve. On criminal charges, we had thirty-four arrests, the higher those were eight for strength of the peace, for a total of four hundred sixteen arrests for this year date. Traffic charges, we have twenty-three traffic charges issued. For highway, four hundred two traffic citations has been issued. We were eleven highway accidents, brought about five parked on the code sixteen, took five hundred and fifty-seven calls over the month. This month, this period has been a very good period, it's been quiet, cool weather brought about a change, so our calls have went down this week. It's gonna be another week before the Franklin Parish homecoming, so we'll be out there Friday night.
Thank you, Chief. What is your pleasure?
We'd like to accept the Police Chief's monthly report.
You probably move, we accept the Police Chief of Police monthly report, second. And second, all in favor, say aye. Let the record reflect, he was unanimously approved. Community Senator Report.
Report for September two thousand twelve, there were two events, both paid events, Pipeline Association and a party.
I have a question. The refund of deposit, it shows no, and then it says forfeit, whether it was not refunded and those funds were remanded back to the city as an item number one, Pipeline Association?
Exactly.
Second one?
And the second one?
Doesn't show anything.
Refund has not been deposited yet, it will be deposited on this week, because Roxanne wasn't here to make her check out, so we'll have to do that this week. She didn't decide whether or not she wanted to get a deposit back or put it to something else, or she just decided, so we'll have it ready for her this week.
So you're saying we're holding that money? We're holding that money, that deposit money, we're just holding it for her until she makes a decision?
No, she's made her decision now, somebody has to make her check out.
And she wants it back?
Yes, she does want it.
Okay, so it will be refunded?
Yes.
Okay, but you don't have.
She said I can refund it, yes, yeah.
So you don't know what day it's gonna be?
No, but I.
You got a date?
No, I couldn't give you a date, because it hasn't been refunded yet. But it'll be this week.
What is your pleasure?
I saw monthly, we set a couple of hours.
Proper move in second, all in favor, say aye. Economic and Development Report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members and guests. First of all, I'd like to start off by saying that we certainly want to extend our condolences today to the family and to Craig Gill's family. I think they have lost loved ones, Buddy. And Buddy was a police chief here for many, many years and very positive in this community, and it was certainly a tremendous loss. I would like to say that.
If we would, could we have one of them filed for?
Sure. I'd like to say that we are, with the airport situation that we've had with reconstruction and renovation of the lobby, we'll begin on November one. All paperwork has been submitted by our attorney and to the occupants of that facility to make it available for us to start construction. And it is our plans to begin that on November one of this year. Hopefully that we will have that completed within a, within at least a two month period before the first year. And to make that available for our guests who fly into the city for that use and that they'd be proud of and that the city would be very proud of. There's no doubt in my mind that that will happen. Secondly, I'd like to say that we have some, we have a guest here, Mr. Elton Williams with Winsborg Tire and Rubber Recycling. He has a proposal that he would like to submit to the city for your support and give the authorization to the mayor to submit for a grant application. We have had the opportunity to visit with him and accompany his company, and they are in good standing with the company and with the city. And I think it is going to be an asset to our community, to the city of Winsborg, if we do pursue this grant application that we're going, looking at. I will let you know that he is going to give a little presentation, and I think you, each one of you have a copy of it on your desk. The plans and specifications will be drawn up, and I'm not taking any of his thunder, but he'll go through the specifics of the application. But plan and specification will be drawn up and submitted for bid process, and the plans and specifications cost and permit cost will be a part of the grant itself. Now understand, and we want to understand upfront, that the city of Winsborg will have to pay for the plans and specifications and the grant process, but those funds will be recovered at the awarding of the grant if it's, if it isn't successful. We see no reason why it shouldn't be. We feel like that it is going to have a tremendous economical impact on our community, on the business itself, and at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Elton Williams to go over with you, with each one of you, the pamphlet or the, that you have in front of you on the grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, members of the City Council, Mayor, guests. On behalf of Winsborg Rubber Recycling, I first want to say that it has been our pleasure over the last ten or eleven years that we have been in this community to work with the city of Winsborg and provide jobs here and help the community, and we feel very much a part of the community, even though a lot of us do live in the city of Vicksburg, we feel that Winsborg is kind of a second hometown for us. We're getting to know the town very well, we're getting to know a lot of people here fairly well, and we just really appreciate the partnership we have with the city in the past, and we hope to continue that relationship going forward. We have already, this, the project that we're proposing now is a continuation of a project that we started back in two thousand and ten, in which we are repairing and improving the concrete in industrial park. The original concrete that was there was placed for a boat plant, it was only four inches thick, no sub base placed under it, and it is not held up due to the amount of load capacity that our materials and our traffic is putting on the concrete, it's more than it was originally designed to do. So we are, we are upgrading the concrete and trying to get it more to an industrial level where it can handle the full truckload capacity and that sort of thing for legal truckloads. Phase one, we already completed in two thousand and ten with the work from the city of Winsborg. It was approximately eighteen thousand square feet of concrete we lived in a place. We did receive a grant from the Delta Regional Authority for approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars to pay for construction, and those funds have been received by the city now, and we are in good standing there. And thus far, in the past years, that concrete has been down, there was no signs of cracking or rust. And you'll see on the drawing here, the area that is yellow is the area that was completed in that first product, project, and there are also some pictures of the completed concrete there, and where you can see how smooth and nice it is, and also where we were loading flatbed trucks was one of the reasons for doing that, to give us a safe location to do that. The second phase of this was done in April of two thousand and eleven. This was done with emergency funds, emergency funds from the Delta Regional Authority. They constructed a two-truck loading dock on the facility, where the truck can back in directly, we drive directly off of a hydraulic jack, hydraulic load plate driving onto the truck, makes loading trucks a lot safer, there was a cover awning so their materials can be loaded in all the weather. It is coming out of the two main storage warehouses, that you have central access from each of those two warehouses to the truck dock. The approximate project cost of that was forty-six thousand dollars, and again, it was done with emergency funds from the Delta Regional Authority, because Winsborg Rubber's Workers' Comp Insurance Company was threatening to cancel our workers' comp without getting that loading dock in place due to some accidents we'd had with the temporary dock that we had there. And since we are no longer having to use a temporary structure, we now have a permanent dock location, those accidents have been eliminated, and we are in good standing with our workers' comp carried. And you again see the location that that dock was put in in the company drawing, and also a photograph of the completed dock where you see that it's slowed down, has adequate drainage, and is very nice and a real major upgrade for that industrial site that will be useful to any other business that may ever be there, not that we hope they will be. But it does belong to the city and therefore is an upgrade in progress. Phase three, this is the largest scope project that we would like to do, but it's the most disjointed. The other, other projects have been very localized, long pores, long sections, all connected together. This is pretty much patching together everything else that hasn't been done. When we complete this, ninety-five percent of the concrete in the facility will have been upgraded to an industrial level. It's going to continue to improve our employee safety by making it easier for us to transport materials across our facility as we need to. It's going to increase the life of our mobile equipment, which will decrease our cost of operation. It's going to improve site access for the trucks that are coming in to enable us to have easier time shipping out materials and receiving materials in and continue processing. And it's going to eliminate gravel debris and contaminant from our feedstock, and also will eliminate some debris from getting out on the road by having better tractor access in our facility and out of our facility. We'll be tracking rest materials out onto industrial drive. The areas are to, are to be included, we've built a truck dock in the, a truck scale on the facility while we have been there. There's an area between the truck scale and the primary treading building and the old warehouse, one of the old warehouses that is there that's used for tire delivery, that area where everyone that brings us tires in is constantly driving over that area and backing into that area. Right at the end of our truck dock, it's just, it's really torn up, because everything that comes into that facility goes across that area of the plant. The area between the office building and the old warehouse tie into phase one, there's just a fairly wide strip that'll tie into the original phase that came across on the top of the tee, to where that entire area back there between the truck dock and the both warehouses and the office complex will be new concrete. And then a small strip going into the old warehouse that's still there to be replaced, to make, make storage materials into the warehouse easier and improve access to that warehouse. There's also a truck access in the north portion of the facility to the truck scale. That's the main, main entrance from industrial drive where everything comes into the plant. And that area is, is actually still holding up fairly well, but it is starting to show signs of wear, so we'd like to go ahead and fix it before it gets to the point where it's creating a problem. And also truck access to the south portion of the facility, we've got to widen this area out, because that's where our raw materials deliver, trucks are having to pull in at angles to dump into our raw material building, so we need a wider berth there. And also, that concrete is totally gone, there's really no concrete there now, we're driving over gravel and loose, and it's raining and wet, we almost get, we're stuck out there, it's kind of turned into a wash pit. Then there is an area on our raw material building that we built as we came into the facility where material is kind of spilling out the bottom underneath, where the metal skirting, metal siding stops at a certain level that allows ventilation, the raw materials are spilling out onto the ground, we want to go in, clean all that up, put an area, ribbon of concrete there to skirt around that building to where that material stays on concrete and we don't lose that material, we clean it up easily, and it will help in our mill side there. And then there is a small area of pumped concrete inside of our raw material building where it tied into some old concrete there that has broken, where we just want to patch that up to save our mobile equipment for loading product into our process. The estimated amount of concrete needed is twenty-two to twenty-three thousand square feet. Again, Myers &amp; Meyer is going to help narrow that down and get it to an exact figure, and this is based off estimates done on drawings that I have completed, and Myers &amp; Meyer will get that down probably a little bit more exact, but right now, the estimate is twenty-two, twenty-two thousand to twenty-three thousand square feet. The estimated cost is a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which again, we're wanting to, but that does not include the engineering and design costs in there that we've got to give from Meyer &amp; Meyer. That's just for the concrete work itself, the removal, disposal, the sub base, six inches of sub base we want to put down, the metal reinforcement and the concrete that we are proposing to be put in. And we are again going to approach Delta Regional Authority for funding assistance in a third grant proposal to do this. Grant deadline for that is December first. We have to have our grant application in by December first. We would like to have all of our bids in by that time to where we know we're going to the Delta Regional Authority with the exact right amount of money, and we have all the bidding included in the application when we submit it, so therefore, there's no, we will eliminate some of the delays that we've had getting paid in the past, just because some of that information had been collected after the fact, and you created some slowdowns by having all that information included in the bid project upfront, it will speed up the payment process to the city. So that's one reason we're asking for approval at this point, so that we can start this project moving forward, we can get the design engineering done, we can get the specs out, we can get the bidding done through the public bidding process that we have to go through. You'll see on the, in the last drawing there, the areas that are highlighted again in yellow are the areas that we would like to do the concrete work on and do the improvements. You see it's a very large portion, but it's, it's a lot of small areas, but it covers a pretty good portion of the facility. Again, by the time this is done, ninety-five percent of that concrete will have been upgraded. And there are also pictures of some of the big potholes that we have on the facility showing the need for this work. Thank you very much for your attention, and if you have any questions, you can address them towards me or Mr. Cobb.
Thank you. I would like to say that, that if the City Council would authorize the, the mayor to go forward with this and to engage in the engineering, design, and specifications of this project, it definitely would enhance the appearance of an industry that we have in our community. And if this is done, it could, it could make it a, an area that could be a tremendous selling point to prospective industries that come in here, and it would eliminate some of the bad images that is there at, there at present time.
Mr. Cobb, were you asking us to do this tonight?
Yeah, I'm asking to authorize that.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Although the presentation was good, and I feel like the information that we have here is adequate, I still think that we need to take a look at this and be able to talk with you or this gentleman, even within the next day or two, to really get a full understanding as to whether or not we want to pursue this. I understand what it does for that particular facility, but at this particular time, I feel like we don't have enough information to make an adequate decision.
Sure. Consensus of the City Council, we will be more than happy to entertain any questions or sit down and visit with, with you. Again, this, this project came to our attention last week, and, and they came down and made a presentation.
Billy, is this just an application for a grant?
Well, it's an application, and with the application, we have to have plans and specifications, and that adds with Meyer &amp; Meyer, doing the plans and specifications for the project.
Can I just jump in and mention something real quick? Also, along with this application, since we are doing, and a, since we will be doing plans and specifications beforehand, we will also need to ask the council, the willing to pass a resolution for the council, to authorize the advertisement on, on the project. If we are going to postpone this until a later date, since it does seem to be a very short timeframe, I'd also ask the council, at the time that they consider doing the project and submitting the application for a grant, to also consider a resolution to authorize advertisement for the project as well.
I have no problem, I, I'm speaking for myself, once again, I have no problem looking at the entirety or the completed package as such. How long would it take you to take care of that completed package to get, so that we can see where we are and what we're up against?
Hopefully, I'd be able to have some more information for y'all about this later on the week. I wouldn't be able to have plans and specifications done this week, of course, but I could have some additional information for y'all as far as dealing with the price, our estimated costs, along with the engineering costs, and we can present y'all with a, with a package. And I'm not sure how that works with Mr. Ellis and Mr. Cobb's timeframe, but I'd be, I'd be able to have y'all some additional information from our end by the end of the week.
I appreciate if we could get that information, get a complete package, and have a resolution prepared to, to present to the council or to me, so I can take a look at it. I like to have this resolution so that I can review it prior to making, making that decision, or at least at the time that the decision is made.
Could I please ask the City and Council to do a continuation of this meeting to a later date, so we can get that information together and act on it? It is critical, the timing, the timing of this project, to have the application for the funding, it is critical to us, because it's in December. The full application process has to be submitted by, by December for DRA for us to act on. And again, you know, we apologize for not having more time than we have right now, but it was, it was at some constraints there that, that caused this. And again, right now, you will have the exposure, and I'm wanting to make sure that you understood that the exposure to the city is going to be the engineering, design, and specification cost until and if, and I want you to understand what I said, until and if the, the grant application has been approved and, and we've received the, the grant funds available to repay that cost to the city.
I have, I have no problem. Personally, I have no problem, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Cobb, you know, with the, with an additional meeting, but not a continuation meeting, that it be a special call meeting at that time, so that way it makes it more finite that everybody has everything at that time to finish. A continuation meeting could be just as the same, and it could roll on at a special call meeting, and we know it's going to be costly, so we're going to make sure we got it done and done at that particular time. I'm asking for a special call meeting instead of a continuation meeting.
That's your problem.
Yes, sir.
So we can have that information, you say, down by, by the end of the week, we'd have it up, so we can be looking at probably a special call meeting by the week after next? Go ahead and get this done, keep them on y'all timeframe, still keep them in the timeframe.
We get it done that quickly, we will, we'll still be okay. We need, because, because the public bidding has to take place over the course of about a thirty day time period, if I'm, if I'm correct, we need to get this approval done. We're in the month of October, so we have the thirty days to do it.
Mayor, Cobb, special meeting.
You said, you said we're looking at, with Captain Lance?
Hopefully.
Yeah, he said, hopefully. Myers said they can have the, another information submitted by, by the end of the week, and when you did all the other information, there was a chance to look over this, so we probably will be looking at it next.
But he can now be in contact with each other. Once we have a date, we'll, we'll contact you.
Okay. Yes, there's your key, was in the timeframe.
And I do want to say that we did contact, at our meeting last week, we did contact a couple of the council members, and they were unavailable at that time to come to the meeting, and we tried to contact additional council members so that we could have at least a couple there in that meeting, and it was unsuccessful to do that. You know, and we understand that you're in very busy schedule, and this is during the period of the day, and, but, but, if you, any of you have any specific questions or requirements that you want for the information that is going to be presented, feel free to contact me, call me, call the mayor's office, and we will make sure that Myers &amp; Meyer and Winsborg Tire and Rubber Recycling will have that information available, so it can be presented and up to par with the City Council. At this time, I would, Elton, we do appreciate it, and we'll be in touch with you, and, and we'll gather all the information necessary to.
Let me know when I need to come back. Or give me other information, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would also like to say that I mentioned the, beginning of the construction on the airport. on the airport, uh, the airport, so that we had a very good meeting, uh, last week with our, our airport committee, uh, and I think it was very productive, uh, everyone understands and knows exactly where we stand. Uh, uh, the rent, uh, for the facility that is there has been brought up to, up to date. Uh, we have received over five thousand dollars in back rent that has been, uh, brought to current status and we were very appreciative of that. And, uh, I, I'd like to say at this time to, looking at the airport ordinances and requirements of the operation, those, those, that ordinance was done in nineteen eighty-six and, and it's outdated and we need, we will be having the airport committee to look, uh, at the, at those ordinances, uh, to bring a recommendation, recommendation back to the council for their consideration, uh, to upgrade that ordinance, um, for, for, for the... I'd entertain any questions anyone has. Thank you, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Billy, and a very good presentation, I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, monthly finance statement, I think everyone has a copy?
A bit of motion there.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, I'll accept the motion for, uh, economic development report.
I saw one.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Let the record reflect, unanimously approved. Thank you. Uh, everyone has a copy of, uh, financial report?
Okay.